I'm recording.
Okay, hello, everyone. I've got 6:30 and we've got a quorum. And so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and Joey, I do see the recording icon, so we are, we are on first item for tonight and the additions, deletions, or corrections to her, to our agenda. Okay, hearing not all entertained Russian. Oh, thought I heard something. Okay, I guess I heard of something I wasn't supposed to. So hearing no addition stations or corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Gregory Williamson. I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second? Been moved and seconded that we approved the minute, pardon me, approved the agenda for tonight. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next item up is, are the minutes of our last meeting. Do we have any corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Gregory. I'll also make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay. Do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes from our previous meeting. That would be on November 10th. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, our next item would be our section for public comment. And I understand we do have someone from the public that would like to to talk to us tonight. So Joey, if you would go ahead and introduce them and an announcement and people do comment publicly, please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we had some, one written testimony submitted. It was included in the packet as page four. We also have someone who signed up for testimony, public comments, and that is Mr. Matt Patron.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Mac. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, um, I have a couple of comments on the, on the agenda on page eight on the section regarding the planning commission. It has a, it has a comment about the chair that I think is, I don't know if they've revised this or not. It looks like they had some comment on there to speak to the lawyer or somebody about it, but the, the chairman of the planning commission should not be signing contracts or deeds or any instruments at all for the town of Green Mountain Falls. That's strictly by, that strictly should be done by either the board of trustees or or a, or a paid employee of the town. And frankly, if I was the chairman of the planning commission, I think I'd be asking my personal lawyer what kind of liability I was getting into. The, the, the planning commission is, is not elected or employed by the town and so they, they act as a as a advisory board only, and I think that they should continue in that respect. I'm, I have some comments about the about the the Devil Mountain annexation, and I'm pleased that they're going to be discussing trail management and restrooms and public parking. And I frankly, you know, the, all that property is private property. If they're wanting to park whatever they want on it, I suppose. But the town really should not be involved in any of their in any of their functions on their own private property. Further on, on page it has a comment about, at the very end, the conclusion was the approval of the Red Devil Mountain and Joyland annexation petitions. And frankly, they shouldn't be approved at all yet. They haven't had a public hearing. And frankly, I would have felt better if, if the recommendation was for to determine the, the in a series of public hearings, the value of the annexation to the town. Annexation obviously is a a quid pro quo. There should be something gained on both sides. Whether something's given up or not, that's to be determined. Point is that, that should be, that should be a mile away out adversarial conversation with the petitioner. And I don't think that on any document written by the town, it should say approval other than approving a, a public hearing. And that just doesn't, that's just not what it looks like. So that's that. And if I'm allowed to speak during the during the part of the meeting that involves the the annexation, I have some other comments along with my, along with my supplemental.
Yeah, on the, now on those items, item seven is our annexation petition. That's the only one we're actually going to have public hearing on.
Okay, and that's, and then is that, is that a, that is not today?
That is today. We are, we are, it's item seven on our agenda today.
Okay, so I'll be allowed to speak during that.
Yeah, I'll do public hearing on that. Yeah, but, but the preceding one is just an information type of thing. There's no official anything on that really, except unless we want to make some recommendations.
What I have a problem with is that, is that it says approval of the, of the Red Devil Mountain and Joyland annexation petitions. And there are lots of people who will take that as that it's, it's annexed, it's approved.
Yeah, no, this is only
how that gets, how that gets published.
Yeah, the clarification I need to provide on that, we can only recommend approval to the, to the board of trustees on that. That's all we can do. So okay. Is, Mac, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the commission to Mac? If not, we'll go ahead and close down the public comment section. And we will be moving on now to item number five, our draft bylaws. And Joey, if you would go ahead and kind of summarize.
Yes, congratulations, commissioners. I'll start there. This is your last meeting of 2020. We made it through a heck of a year. Thank you for staying with us. This is introduced item five. It's to confirm, and I'll put that on the screen in a second, that we adequately captured or responded to your comments in the draft bylaws. Mr. Patron does actually bring one up and we can get to that. You won't see, you don't can see strike through or underline because the document turned into a massive mess and there's still some funny editing on it. So I'm happy to go into that. And a couple of questions. So alternates, it was asked. I mean, I'm going to go ahead and roll into a couple of the comments that I responded to. We did make several changes. And this, of course, is going to be going to the board for approval. So this is not done. And let me get to that. How alternates are appointed, that is established by ordinance and not within these bylaws. That's established in ordinance 2020-03 to procedural. The planning commission has expressed during a few meetings that it doesn't see an immediate need for alternates. But the option remains available because flexibility is key to avoiding rewrites and further legal fees. So I, I'm happy to look into or ask for alternate language from the town attorney who did draft this. And this, this language does in fact sound intimidating. I agree with both the chair who brought this up and Mr. Patron. Deeds, contracts, and other instruments, this language is meant to be general. There are occasions that the code points to maybe a replat that is signed by the chair and the mayor. So in that instance, the chair does in fact confirm that the planning commission heard and approved something. There are sometimes stamps that are signed and approved. We can amend this language to not read contracts, deeds, and other deeds does sound. We can, we can edit that. So and in addition, the chair doesn't need board approval to appoint subcommittees. That would be done according to ordinance because we do have procedures for this. I did, I believe it was Commissioner Matthews who asked, or and the chair asked for may present to board of trustees. We struck, we struck shall in both of these instances versus may. And may also present to the board of trustees. There's just two instances there. Everything else was a pretty simple change. And I'm happy to take questions.
Yeah, Joey, I, I kind of echo Max's statements that he made on, on the chair duties. Obviously, I'm the chair. And you know, there, it does seem a little strange to have some of that language in there. And maybe we ought to kind of wonder if we ought to revisit that, that piece of it.
Absolutely. And this I'm sure there's a reasonable suggestion from the town attorney who drafted this.
Yeah, like, and the point that Mac brought up is completely accurate. Planning commission are volunteers, they're not employees or elected officials. And you know, signing anything that usually has any meat to it usually has to go through in a, either an employee or an elected official.
I'm happy to have that edited.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions, the, the commission can either, with that direction to staff and both trustee Guthrie and the mayor is here to hear this. And the commission is, can either hand this back to staff to pass this on to the board with those edits. Or if the commission would rather see this again, I'm happy to do so.
Any other thoughts? I've done plenty of talking on this.
We might want to see it again. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that's sort of my thought. Since we haven't been real clear about what the edit's going to look like. It makes sense to me to see it, but I don't want to. If it's time sensitive, but I want to push it out too long.
Commissioner, Chairman, the planning commission hasn't had bylaws in years, and I don't know how many. So if it's, it's not that time sensitive. I'm happy to bring it back.
If that's something we can handle via email or if it needs to be in a meeting.
I would want it in a meeting published if we're gonna see it again. Those were my thoughts, by the way. I'd rather, since it's not time sensitive, I'd rather get the edits in and get a clean document to, to recommend approval up to the board on. Is there any other discussion? If not, I would. Yeah, it looks like we need action on that. So I would entertain a motion.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission cannot act on this and I can bring it back for formal action at, as old business at the next meeting.
Okay, so we don't need a motion to send it back in just for the next meeting. That's where I was going with it. So
That's up to you, but I
There's no action to recommend approval. So if we don't need action on it, then we can just put it on the, on the agenda for, for next time.
We can continue this business at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So that includes item five, item six. It's a presentation discussion on Red and Devil Mountain and Joyland Development Concept Plan. And Julia, do you have anything that you'd like to go over with us on this before we turn it over to to Jesse?
I'm happy to introduce this item. Because I think we can always get further clarification and make sure that everyone understands what we're doing tonight because it is, it is confusing. I appreciate Mr. Patron's comments. This is a concept plan overview for the Red Devil Mountain. I guess annexation and development plan is Red Devil Mountain and the Joyland parcel. The commission is welcome to ask questions, give feedback to staff, give direction, also to the board liaison and to the petitioner who's here tonight to present. This is new business. The commission may take formal action in the form of a, of a motion as we've discussed before. I understand the commission prefers having its options clearly stated, which would be action, no action, information. I have to prefer, I have to defer to our previous consultant's advice that staff recommends the advisory body give direction and recommend to the board if, if appropriate. So that is an option. Issues of zoning and building development, while critically important, will be considered in the next couple of months if annexation is approved by ordinance. Mr. Stroop, as you mentioned before, is here to take us through the concept plan. And I'm going to you're going to follow my cursor while Jesse speaks. And we good. Jesse, can everyone see the picture on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
So I, I've given this presentation once and it's quite lengthy, so I will give you the quick tour through it tonight and allow any questions after. So I mostly want to talk about the concept plan for Red Devil Mountain. So Julie, if you'll go to the next slide, I'd like to start at the, and just sort of walk you through what the plan is. There we go. So if we look at the area, which is marked trailhead at the bottom of the screen, I'll let Julia catch up with me here. So off of El Paso Avenue. We have the trailhead here, which is on our private property. Trailhead, if you follow the red trail, which is called the Lower Terrell Trail, would be a nature walkway and it would be accessible by a four-wheel drive utility vehicle for handicap accessibility. So we come up to the town overlook and restroom location. Here we will have a restroom set up with 280 compliant facilities inside and then a park slash picnic area with some great overlooks down to the town. And we then would pick up on the purple trail, which is the Upper Terrell Trail. This could either be ADA, handicap person could ride up or typically everyone will be hiking up this trail to get to the sculpture location. Here we have the sculpture location. And then I think we could go on to the next slide and talk about the sculpture a little bit. Actually, this is a site plan of the town overlook with the restroom location there. And then we have a rendering of what that restroom would look like. Of course, we're going to do some landscaping and some some, some major improvements to the area, but we just threw this rendering onto a photo that we took back first snow of the season. And the next slide is just a view from that area. So these are just views from the site. And then I think, Julia, we could go on to the slide that shows the, the art, the art piece. So what is the skyspace? These are rooms that the artist has designed where, where a person or a group of people would go in and and experience this artist's artwork. It is very meditative, very relaxing and experiential. I've been able to visit two of these skyspaces and they are very impressive. There are 85 of these in the world and we will be the only one in Colorado. The next slide is just some interior shots from different skyspaces around, just to give you an idea of what the inside would look like. Next is a rendering of what the installation would look like from the outside. We've worked very closely with the artists for about a year and a half to make sure that this, this seemed appropriate and looked like it fit in to to the mountain. And I think that we've achieved this. And then if we go on to the next slide, we can see what that would look like from the, from, from the park or from Gazepo Island. Then on to the next slide, we pick up from the sculpture. You can drop down to the gold trail, which is the Pittman Trail. If you're not interested in the art, there's a bypass back at the bottom. So you could completely bypass the artwork if you wanted to and just were out for the hike across Pittman Trail, which drops down into the Joyland parking lot. And looking just to the north of that, we have some grazing area where we there's currently some equine use there and we would like to potentially do some kind of horse rescue or or a fostering program that mirrors one that we have that we do here in Oklahoma City. And Julia, I think you can go over and just show where the final trailhead is over at Joyland. So you can see the, the final trailhead ends here currently. If there was ever a need, then we would, we would back it back over to the Red Devil Mountain property line. And so I anticipate some questions and I will just let you all ask me what you would like about the project.
Okay, commissioners, feel free to ask Mr. Stroop any questions. I've got a list of them. So I'll let everyone else go first. Okay, I'm not hearing any. So I'll go ahead and, Jesse, I'll go ahead and start in on, on my questions. When I was looking at the drawings, parcel 11 is returned, is referred to in some of the text under, I believe, our next agenda item. The petition has parcel one. So it looked like there was a disconnect on the drawing, probably just a typo thing. I'm assuming it's called parcel 11. But I think on some of the text on one of the other prints, it shows parcel one.
Is this the one acre parcel at the Joyland property?
Hang on a minute. I've got a separate file up. I'll see if I can't be more specific. Of course, my computer's slow. The annexation plat, not the Joyland parcel. Come on, computer, catch up.
Mr. Chairman, I have the annexation plat for Joyland up.
Go to the next one. It's on the next sheet.
The sheet number 18, or is it on the next plat?
It's on the next plat. Sorry.
Got you. Parcel number 11.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, Todd, I think that's a Roman numeral two because we have parcel one, parcel two there.
Oh, okay. That's supposed to be Roman numeral. I'm sorry. I took it. It looked like an 11 to me. I'm sorry.
It's pretty small.
Okay. So yeah, that was a question I had specifically on the drawing. It's supposed to be Roman numeral two. Let's see. No, that doesn't quite match up either, Jesse. Because that says parcel two and the legal description is the Joyland Church parcel and Red Devil Mountain parcel. It says parcel one.
All right, I will, I'll flush out what's, what's going on there and just get it corrected.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's just something I noticed. I've looked at my share of drawings. So that's just something I noticed as a discrepancy, apparent discrepancy on the drawing.
Mr. Chairman, I can work with the applicant. There have been a number of versions. So that also could be my error, but I, we can certainly.
Yeah, that's just something I noticed. It looked like a drawing discrepancy and I want to make sure that, uh, you know, if we, if everything goes through that we don't have drawing discrepancies. The next one, next questions I have, the, the water and electric lines. Are those in right of ways currently? Or some of them go on to private property that's not owned by the, by you guys?
So the plan right now, and we're still working, we just filed our utilities plan with Pike Peak Regional. And so those are yet And so those are yet to be approved. But Julia, if you can go to that. So the red line is proposed electric that actually gets picked up on a telephone pole behind Karen Watson's house and on her private property. So we, we will be filing an easement for electric to go there. And so that overhead line goes above her property until it crosses over into HGMFF property.
Okay.
And then I can tell you that this proposed water line was rejected by the utilities company and they're going to have us go up. Basically, we're going to go up the lower Terrell Trail with, with the water line.
Yeah, you might want to update the drawing with that.
We just got this information probably yesterday. Okay. Is to go through the concept plan here and to, to have the, the accurate plan available for the public hearing.
Okay. Yeah, be sure if we need to look at right of ways, we get that noted on that, would you?
Sure.
Okay. Then a quest, question on the, on the structures. Folks are up there and we get a hailstorm. Are they adequate to provide some protection?
As far as the buildings, absolutely.
Okay. And then we're looking at a word right there. That's right there says trespass. Can you clarify what that's supposed to mean?
I have no idea, Todd.
Okay. Yeah, that caught my attention. It's like trespass and it's pointed right there and this is. That's all.
I, I think that that just needs to be deleted. We started this concept plan before we owned parcel number 34, which we now own. So I'll get that cleaned up.
During the board of trustees, I think it was mentioned that, or someone mentioned about poss, the possibility of having restrooms over by the other end of Pittman Trail on the Joyland property. Is that an option?
That was a request that the, that the mayor made and I went back and talked to Historic Green Mountain Falls Foundation and Mr. Garcia, who owns the Joyland property. And, and we agree that there's a need for it. I will ask that, so, so that would get qualified in the annexation agreement.
Okay.
That we would agree to, to having those there. I, I would like to ask that that be that it says that we have restroom facilities at, at that end of the trail. That way, if we have the flexibility later, that we could have additional, if we needed to have additional parking later on, we could have additional parking where the horse barns are now, we could have restroom facilities there. So I just want to make sure that, that in the annexation agreement that we agree to have restroom facilities on that end of the trail and not dictate which piece of property they're on.
Okay.
You know, immediately when we open the Pittman Trail, we will install at least portals there until we have some more decision making.
Okay. Have you identified anything that the, that the town would need to maintain as part of this proposal?
I, I have not. We have, we've taken care to make sure that, that anything that needs maintenance is on private property. So we are envisioning managing this from trailhead to trailhead, including the parking lots and restrooms.
Okay. Any other, that, that kind of went through my list. So commissioners, anyone else have anything?
You've covered it well. My primary question that I thought of was the, the Joyland restroom and that's been covered. So.
Okay.
I know that Mac is going to want to make comment and I'm interested in, in hearing how Jesse responds to some of the questions on the town's benefits to to this proposal.
I do have. It's my turn.
Yeah, I wasn't really intending to, to do a lot of public input. If you got something, a quick question, then we can.
Well, I, I submitted a document that, that has numerous questions on it and I'd like to have those answered and, and, and and I don't know if, if that's, if, if time allows, but I would like to, I would like to have answers to actually all those questions.
I'm, I'm happy to, to speak to those. If, if someone wants to read them off to me, I don't have the packet in front of me and I don't think I can read this.
Okay. Somebody else want to do that? I mean, I don't have to do this. If, if the clerk wants to do it or the.
Listen, but I will. Wondering as you know, instead of taking up, unless commissioners want to hear the responses. You know, we could do multiple different ways. We could have you two work together, but if the commissioners would like to hear the response, we can go through and, and and have the response either way.
I have a comment. This is Gregory. Is this more appropriate for the public hearing to address these types of issues?
What was at the back of my mind? Because this is really not a public hearing. This is more, more of an FYI for the planning commission.
And that's what I said. We, we're addressing the issues the planning commission needs to understand before we go forward with any kind of recommendation for a public hearing. And I appreciate those, Mac, and I they're more appropriately addressed at the public hearing.
That's fine. I'll, I can hold off. I probably will have more, but that's, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, I think our public hearings are scheduled for January, correct, Julia?
The fifth, I think.
Mr. Chairman, there is a public hearing that has been noticed in the paper and will continue to be noticed five times for the public hearing, which must last a minimum of an hour on January 5th at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Could I ask one question tonight?
Yeah, go ahead, Mac.
What is the reason for your annexation request? Why are you even asking for annexation into Green Mountain Falls?
Um, Mac, you're aware that the mission statements of Historic Green Mountain Falls Foundation and Green Box Arts is to provide things for the town of Green Mountain Falls. And so we want to be part of the community with this project. We think that it's important and, and we just want to be part of the community with it. The majority, you know, a, a good portion of the project, the restroom facilities, the town overlook and the nature walk will be in Green Mountain Falls. And so we would like the rest of the project to be there. It also goes back to the comprehensive plan where we wanted to have a connection between town hall and the lake. And so this Pittman Trail accommodates that.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, any more questions? Comments? I would, I would encourage that if we're going to have recommendations back to the board of trustees, my thoughts are to be include that in our next agenda item with the petition.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out that the discussion, any points, the discussion will be summarized briefly as part of a memo going forward, if, if that's what the commission would like.
Okay. That might not be a bad idea to, to capture what's been discussed, to forward it back to the board of trustees so that they know what what was discussed here tonight.
This is Gregory. I have one more comment.
Okay.
As far as what I'm seeing, we've been asked as the planning commission to advise the board of trustees, do we see any glaring negatives or wonderful positives? What is our approach to this? Do we see anything that need, that hasn't been addressed? And I, I like the presentation. I don't see anything here that we need to bring up and say this needs to be addressed before we go forward with this. I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but my take on this is we've seen a good presentation and this needs to go forward in the process and needs to be addressed in a public hearing for the rest of the town to comment on unforeseen that, and if no one has any, then it's a good project annex. I mean, that's my take on it.
Three, with everything that Gregory has said, I feel like it's a good presentation. I feel like it's a, an asset, a nice asset for the town so many ways. And so it's, I don't see any issues that, that this commission needs to address. And it seems reasonable to make the recommendation to the board of trustees.
Okay. Well, yeah, like I said, I'd like to contain any recommendations as part of item seven, which is the actual consideration to, of the petition itself, if that's okay for everyone.
It sounds appropriate.
Okay, commissioners, any other comments? Questions? If not, we'll move on to agenda item seven. Now this one is a, is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing on this, Red Devil Mountain and Joyland annexation petitions, consideration and recommendation of the board of trustees. And Julia, as usual, kind of start with you and then we'll move on to the petitioner and then any public comments, pardon me, we'll move on to commission comments and then public comments and then questions, whatever that arrives from that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item seven, as you said, is the Red Devil Mountain and Joyland petition for annexation, which has been accepted by the board as resolutions 202015 and 202016, thereby setting a public hearing on January 5th at 7:00 PM, 2021. The petitions have been referred to the commission for consideration and your recommendation will be carried to the board for that public hearing. The board was able to give policy guidance and direction to staff and the town attorney at the November 17th meeting, allowing us to draft an annexation agreement, which is a contract between the two parties. Any further issues raised? Trap, the example trash trail, maintenance, traffic, parking, things we've talked about can be negotiated prior to and during the hearing. So your input is valuable. Nevertheless, this is for a recommendation on the annexation petition that will be going to public hearing.
Okay. And we'll go to Jesse next. Do you have anything additional you'd like to add?
I, I don't. I think the, I think the petition stands, stands on its own feet here. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, but I I don't think I need to drag you back through the petition.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments? For either staff or the petitioner. I do have one. If we're going to make recommendations back to the board, I would like to have it include the in the annexation agreement for the restroom facilities at the, at the other end of the Pittman Trail. Okay, now we can move to public, public comments.
Is that me?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Mac.
Okay. First question. What exactly is the value of this transaction to Green Mountain Falls? Is there any tax revenue? In most cases, when annexation is done, it's a quid pro quo and both parties have, get some value out of it. What exactly is the value to Green Mountain Falls?
At this point, I don't know if we, if we're going to, if we're going to basically go back into a, a dialogue. This is public's opportunity to present questions for consideration. So go to the commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments for the, for the comments? For Mac? Okay. Hearing none. Do we have any other public input since this is a public hearing?
Well, I, I have a, I guess my question is, when will my concerns be addressed?
I would think that it would be more to me. This is just me speaking. It would be more appropriate at the public hearing in January.
Okay.
That, that would be my, my thoughts. But I may be off base. So if I'm off base, someone please flag me.
Well, I'll, 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 I'll go along with that as long as I know that, that my questions and concerns and those of others are going to be answered at, at that time.
I'll guarantee we have that conversation.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to include Mr. Patron's comments as part of the memo if the commission wants to send those along.
I would like to make sure that the board sees it.
Okay, commissioners, any other comments, questions? And if not, I would entertain a motion on the petition.
I, I would be willing to make a motion that this petition be recommended for approval to the board of trustees.
Okay, Lamar has moved. Do we have a second?
Yeah, this is Gregory. I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion that we need to have on the, on the motion itself? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like the motion passes for oh. Okay, moving on. Item number eight. I see Catherine's on board. Trustee Liaison Report on Board Action to Matters of Comprehensive Plan Implementation. Catherine, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um. Well. Uh, there. The simplest thing to address as far as the progress towards the implement implementation plan of the portion of the comp plan is the board action as of the first of December, which was to approve the three mile plan. Which needs to be done as part of a step towards annexation. And it also helps us work with it. So it's a regional approach to planning as well. And if you want to take a look, it's it's 4.3 of the comp plan. There are some illustrations as well of what that three mile radius looks like. And some overlap, of course, with Manatee Springs and Woodland Park. And of course, things are moving along with the planning for the signage and parking plan. There's a survey. I hope everyone has received the survey. It is posted on the website. If you don't have a link, if the link hasn't been sent to you, you can find a link there. And yeah, please give us your feedback.
Catherine, I did notice when I when I went in to do the survey, it appears that it you can go, it it looks like you can go in and do as many surveys as you want. Was that the intention?
I I don't.
Because otherwise, we may end up getting things and, you know, from maybe end up getting a lot of multiples. And also, do you know, was it the intention for that really to be done by property owners only? Because like I say, right now, it's kind of a free and open survey to go to to everyone.
I'm my understanding, I am not a property owner. And I filled one out. If if that was out of line, I don't think so because it's addressed to residents as well as business owners. And a lot of business owners are not residents, but you know, at the same time, we definitely want their input.
Okay. I was just curious because because I know my in the in the family place and I went ahead and sent the link to them and and had them go ahead and fill it out as well since they're actual property owners.
Right. It, I don't know, at this stage, what could be changed to safeguard, you know, so that people who aren't residents of Green Mountain Falls don't fill it out? I don't know. You know, I I sent it out to our to our contacts at the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, I'm sure there's a mix of residents there. You know, there's probably some folks in Chappeta Park and whatnot. However, as you know, one of the questions on the survey is about other, you know, nearby residents. You know, and and how we want to deal with with parking for people who may live in Chappeta Park. So I'd I'd be, I'd like to get their feedback, actually, what what our neighbors think, but it would be helpful if the survey did ask where we live. So if we do get feedback from folks that live in Chappeta Park or Cascade or even Woodland Park, that that we know where that feedback is coming from.
Okay. Yeah, I was just I was just curious. I didn't I didn't know if you had noticed that or not. I, like I said, I just, as soon as it came out, I went ahead and did, I think. I think I did it a day early. I think it was supposed to be from the 7th, but I think I did it on the 6th, but I did know first thing came back with was that you want to do another survey. It's like, oh.
Yeah, well, fortunately, it's it's not a ballot, so we're not. You know, it it's not like it's it's a vote and I do think that it's great. It's information gathering and that's really what we want. And I think it's it's great to get, you know, a pretty widespread, I think, when it comes to trying to gather information from from people, not just residents. But that's just my opinion. I had nothing to do with the creation of the survey. But I am I'm doing my best to represent the interests of the local businesses. And so I think, you know, it's it's a question that you know, I I don't have a clear answer when I filled out the survey about what to do about neighbors. But we certainly want our neighbors to be welcome, so I think we we're we're looking for ideas and input. So I'll be happy to pass that on. And I don't know if there's going to be another survey before we have a a community meeting.
Right. And that's on and for everyone's information, that's on the 15th, correct?
Uh, January, yes.
I thought it was December 15th.
Oh. Um.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think so. Thanks, Julia.
We we the the survey is for stakeholders. I will look into the potential issue as trustee Guthrie said, it is information gathering, but I will look into that duplicative survey issue. And there is a public forum on the 15th of December at 7:00 PM.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure commissioners were aware of that as well.
I think the survey, Julia, correct me if I'm wrong, but the survey there's we're gathering those until January. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but I'm happy to get information and pass it along.
Yeah, I think that's what the survey said, was that we were gathering information until early January.
That would make sense.
I'm sorry, I don't remember what the exact date is. But it makes sense that we would have that we would be able to gather more surveys after the public meeting because people are going to have more ideas. Things and questions will be generated, I think.
Okay.
Anything else?
Commissioners, do you have anything for Catherine? Catherine, I do have some maybe upward communication that, you know, I think at one point in time, we were talking about having maybe a joint workshop with the with the Board of Trustees and Planning Commission. I would I would like to get through the personally, I would like to get through the annexation. But I would think hopefully shortly thereafter, we might be able to to get together and and work up the topics for maybe a joint workshop.
That sounds good. And I'm sorry, I couldn't hear everything you said. Did you were you talking about early next year? Did you say after the holidays or I'm sorry?
It's after, hopefully my mic is still working, but afterwards, after we kind of get past the annexation piece, because I think we're going to be we we need or we don't bite off a little more than we can chew here and we get through that. We get through that first.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Catherine. We're moving on. Item number nine, housekeeping in 2021 schedule and our next regular meeting is January 12th. Do we have any housekeeping items we need to take care of? Julia, I'm not aware of any.
No, sir. That was a placeholder, just in case.
Yeah, something to note that once the bylaws actually do get approved, we need to, I think, per the bylaws, we'll need to actually appoint a secretary and, you know, probably formalize that. So we'll need to kind of keep that in mind as well.
Indeed.
Okay, is there anything else?
Um. Appointing a secretary, are you are you considering a secretary in addition to the commissioners?
Well, that's something we'll have to discuss right now. If if I'm understanding, the bylaws that we're currently working on, we're supposed to basically appoint a a secretary under one of the articles of the bylaws. That person can be outside of the planning commission. And so, you know, it's it's my intention that if it fits within Julia's job description, that we keep Julia doing it, but because I've been happy with her.
Well, actually, it really helps Julia to have somebody else do the minutes. So when Mallory is doing minutes, that was helpful. And I I can tell you as someone who's who did the duties of the secretary, it's really hard to participate and do the minutes. So, you know, and perhaps, I don't know if the new clerk will be able to take that on. I know the, yeah, I know it's it's been a kind of a fuzzy area. There have been times in years past where the the clerk did the minutes. But I guess it depends on budgetary restraints.
Yeah, like I say, once once the bylaws actually do get approved, I just want the thing I wanted to make sure of is that if we do to tag someone that's a part of town staff that is actually within their job description. Because any, at least my experience is anytime you start adding things that are outside job descriptions, usually that is a is a discussion point for for more money.
Well, maybe that's something else that can go into the memo regarding the your the bylaws for the planning commission.
Okay, yeah, right now, we've actually captured it in in one of the in one of the paragraphs that if we, someone that's basically employee of the town, it has to be within their their existing job duties.
Right, right, okay. Okay, all right. I just wanted to throw that out there because it really it may seem like you could do two things at once, but I don't think you do a good job of 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 either when you try to do that.
Totally understand. Okay, is there anything else? If not, we'll just go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:32 PM. And I want to wish all of you happy holiday season. I don't think we'll probably be meeting until after first of the year, so I appreciate everyone's help and have some fun. Try to have some fun over the few couple, next couple of weeks. Take care, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night. Thanks, Catherine. Thank you so much.